I think we can call this meeting to order at six thirty here, so I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the September ninth, twenty nineteen City of Warman Regular Meeting of Council. Starting off with some announcements first, and first of all, I want to welcome Janelle Johnson to our, to our council meeting, and there's going to be something a little more formal later on, but welcome to our meeting tonight, and we'll give you an opportunity to speak a little bit later on, on telling us all about stuff, I'll give you a heads up with that, and enjoy the experience for the next year, so we look forward to working with you. Also work with her as VP, so you'll see too much of me here for the next while. Another announcement, it was announced on September fourth at a press conference at Gordy House Sports Center in Saskatoon, that the City of Warman is one of twelve communities to receive federal and provincial funding for the infrastructure improvements. The sewage treatment lagoon expansion improvement project was not only increased the wastewater treatment capacity to accommodate future community growth, but will also improve the overall affluent discharge quality to meet the Environmental Canada's regulations. Details of the sewage treatment lagoon expansion and improvements include increasing the depth of the existing and primary and secondary lagoon cells, installing an aeration system in the primary and secondary cells, constructing a blower building for the aeration system, and constructing a discharge pipeline to the South Saskatchewan River. The project is estimated to take three years to complete. The project will cost eighteen point one million dollars, funding from the federal government, seven point two four million dollars, with six, six million thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars coming from the provincial contributions, and the municipality would contribute four million eight hundred thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven and two hundred and seventy dollars. So, great news, and I know Counselor Schramm and I, and City Manager Smith were there with Mayor Spence, so very good. Any other announcements that people have? I guess I suppose, okay, so I'll look for a motion. Yes, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to motion to approve the agenda for the September ninth, twenty nineteen Regular Meeting of Council.
Secondar? Counselor Jones, all in favor? Carry? Motion for the minutes? Counselor Jones?
I think a motion for the minutes for the August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of Council be taken as read and adopted.
Secondar? Counselor Peterson, anything from the minutes? Okay, hearing nothing, all those in favor? Carry. I declare that, declare a public hearing to hear comments on proposed bylaw twenty nineteen thirteen, a bylaw to amend bylaw twenty eighteen oh six, known as the zoning bylaw. This amendment will allow that the second freestanding sign may be permitted at council's discretion on C one, central business commercial, and C two, highway commercial property, if a minimum of thirty meters separation from any other freestanding sign on the same site is provided. Any comments? It's an open meeting right now. Nothing about that, okay? I'll, we'll go back into our regular meeting, and we'll look for administration reports. We'll start with Planning Development Manager.
Since he's dealing with that right off the bat, I'll declare a.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Philcheck, members of council. A couple of items for discussion tonight. The first is regarding a freestanding sign amendment for bylaw twenty nineteen dash thirteen. Planning Development has received a request from the college to install a new sign along Central Street at the college, which would include a digital component. The sign would primarily be primarily for college use. The college shares a site with the high school, and because the high school already has a freestanding sign with a digital component, the existing zoning bylaw would not allow for another. Planning and Development met with officials on site to discuss different options. The college's preference is to install a freestanding sign on site just east of the existing high school. They would like to do this to differentiate themselves from the high school as they are the same building. Information related to the proposal and the sign was attached as Appendix A. The bylaw was advertised in the local paper for two consecutive weeks, and no comments or concerns were raised. The recommendation tonight is that council hold a public hearing, which we have, and follow that with three readings.
Okay, looking for a motion? Counselor Schramm?
That the city council gives the first reading to the bylaw, to bylaw twenty nineteen dash thirteen, a bylaw to amend bylaw twenty eighteen zero six, dash zero six, known as the zoning bylaw. This amending bylaw will allow that a second freestanding sign may be permitted at council's discretion on C one, central business commercial, and C two, highway commercial properties, if a minimum thirty meters or seven, ninety-eight point four-three feet separation from any other freestanding sign on the same site is provided.
Secondar for that motion? Counselor Jones?
I just have a question, are we, do we have a quorum to make this a vote?
Yes, just because if, if there's a declaration of community interest, that doesn't, that doesn't make the meeting not meet the requirements.
Just for this, for this vote, for the, for changing the bylaw, I just, I thought maybe because it's a bylaw, we have to have a quorum.
You want, you'd always.
Quorum to start the meeting.
We're going to start the meeting where the quorum did.
Yeah, you'd always have to have a quorum, but if there's a declaration and the individual leaves, that doesn't stop the quorum from, it's not.
Any other questions about this? Okay, all those in favor? Carry, motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, the bylaw, two thousand nineteen dash thirteen be given a second reading.
Secondar for that, Counselor Schramm? Any questions? All those in favor? Carry, motion for three readings? Counselor Jones?
The bylaw two thousand nineteen dash thirteen be given all three readings at this meeting.
Secondar? Counselor Schramm, questions? Okay, all those in favor? Carry, and motion? Thirty-five? Counselor Schramm?
The council approves the request from Great Plains College to erect a freestanding sign at two oh one Central Street East location.
Secondar? Counselor Jones, questions? All those in favor? Carry.
We didn't do the.
We need the third reading of the bylaw first.
Oh, they do what, okay.
We didn't do the request for three readings, so did we?
Yes, we did. Okay, what we didn't do is the final reading.
Final reading, okay. So, third and final reading, Counselor Schramm?
That bylaw twenty nineteen dash thirteen, a bylaw to amend bylaw twenty eighteen oh six, I've already read this. Be adopted, sealed, and signed. I so move.
Secondar? Counselor Jones, any questions? Okay, all in favor? And carry.
Now, now the motion to approve the request.
Motion by Counselor Jones?
Motion to council approves request from Great Plains College to erect a freestanding sign at the two oh one Central East location.
Secondar? Counselor Schramm? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Carry.
Thank you, I'll try to say those ones for when we have barbecue next time.
The next item for discussion tonight is a request to approve a brewery at sixteen Hamilton Avenue. Planning and Development has received a request to operate a brewery out of the property located at sixteen Hamilton Avenue. The brewery will be a small-scale brewery and will be primarily act as a brewery and not open to the public. The owner does wish to hold the odd tour or tasting, however, this will not be done on a regular basis and would only be by special appointment. The biggest concern that we obviously have from a planning and development perspective, and that we have looked at is the parking on Hamilton Avenue, it is a tight area. However, because of this use, we actually feel that it could improve the area in terms of their plans for the site, and the number of staff that they'll have working is minimal, and they have off-street parking for both staff members. During any sort of touring, tasting events, that type of thing, there would be available parallel parking along the street on the west side, and again, this would be atypical and only happen on special occasions. A site plan was provided as Appendix C, plan showing the interior layout as Appendix D, and the location analysis created by the applicant has been attached as Appendix F. I've also included an air photo of Hamilton Avenue, just for reference. The use was advertised in the local paper for one week, we did send notice out to all the property owners within one hundred meters. We received one phone call, it was more of a clarification just around the application and what exactly it was. No written concerns or comments were received before this meeting. So, the recommendation tonight before council is that, and I've created it into two recommendations, just if there was any specific questions about the tasting and licensed beverage room aspect of it.
Okay, so the first motion we're looking for is the discretionary use? Counselor Schramm?
We're counsel to approve the discretionary use for brewery at sixteen Hamilton Avenue.
Okay, secondar for that, Counselor Peterson? Discussion, yes, Counselor Schramm?
If memory serves me correct, around that area, we, we do have trouble with freezing pipes. So, my concern is, does this play into this, will this cause hardship for this business?
No, the one property that we've had issues with on Hamilton, we've only actually had one issue with property on Hamilton. The majority of the issues that we, that affect us, I guess, during the spring thaw is typically further south on Eldorado and south of Hiker, there in the old industrial area. The property that we did have some issues with on Hamilton this year was the one at the end of Hamilton, and it was due to the depth of the frost, and because the owner wasn't overly present there this winter, the water kind of sat for longer than it typically would. So, we, we aren't expecting any issues with this particular site with frozen pipes.
So, this does have new, new infrastructure in it, or is it still the old?
It's still the old infrastructure, but it's not the same quality, let's put it that way, as the southeast, oh, southeast industrial area. When the southeast industrial area was done in the south, it was done a little ad hoc and more kind of on an individual basis. Hamilton actually was designed by an engineering firm and installed to engineered specs. I wouldn't say that it was built to the same specs that you build in industrial area today with, but it's more than, more than acceptable for, for an industrial area of this type.
Okay, I do have another question with that, is, which brings to my memory, some of our infrastructure back in the old, old times, our pipes were made of a certain compound? Does, is this part of that?
No, no, all the pipes in this area are typical PVC.
Okay.
Okay, other questions about discretionary use?
Just out of curiosity, how many, you know, if you know the answer, but how many breweries do we have in town?
This would be the first.
This will be the first?
Yeah, this would be the first. We've had the applicant for the distillery on Central and Main, but this would be the actual first brewery kind of dedicated towards the beer side of things.
Just a quick question, does this also allow for food service? Like, I, I guess that when we're talking discretionary use, like.
No.
Okay.
No, the licensed beverage room, you can have a food component associated with it, but the primary use has to be for like the tasting and tour aspect of it.
Okay.
That means like you could have like appetizers at a tasting type event situation, but you wouldn't have like a restaurant type situation.
It'd never turn to, it captured to that unless it came from.
There'd be a separate approval required for something like that.
Counselor Peterson?
So, with the, I don't know if you're, if you're familiar with Great West and their, their tasting room, kind of like that is, it's used all the time.
Yeah, and Great West is at like a completely different scale than what this would be.
I understand, but.
The space that the, the applicant has available at this area would allow for maybe maximum ten, fifteen people, where the Great West Brewery, I mean, I think the, the tasting room there fits up to three hundred, so, yeah. But, no, good question.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Carry. Okay, motion for discretionary?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the discretionary use for licensed beverage room at sixteen Hamilton Avenue.
Secondar? Counselor Jones? Questions about this one? Okay, all in favor? Carry.
Thank you, that concludes my report, first name.
And city clerks?
Hi, I don't do this very often. I would like to take this moment to welcome Janelle Johnson to our council table. She is going to be this year's youth council representative. So, with that, there was a couple of things that I had to bring to council for approval, and one was we read the guidelines for the youth representative position. So, I brought that forward for council to look at, we kind of discussed it earlier in June, so the recommended changes have been made to that position. And my recommendation is for council to approve the position.
Okay, looking for a motion for that, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion that the City of Warman adopts the position guidelines for a youth council representative as presented.
Secondar for that, Counselor Schramm? Any questions? All those in favor? Carry.
The next thing is for us to actually officially have Janelle at our table, so we need the motion for that as well.
Add a motion for that. Counselor Schramm?
To approve and welcome Janelle Johnson as the youth council representative for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty term.
Secondar for that, Counselor Peterson? Any questions? All in favor? Carry. Okay, thank you, add a motion for reports, yes?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the administration reports as presented for September ninth, twenty nineteen.
Secondar? Counselor Jones? Any questions? All in favor? Carry. Okay, we're at council roundtable. I'll start with Counselor Jones.
I don't have anything to report.
And Janelle, we'll give you your time right here. So, tell us a bit about yourself, and what made you apply for this, and anything else we need to know, a few fun facts.
This is my fourth year in Warman. I applied because I like being, taking on leadership roles and being a role model for younger kids and siblings and family members. I'm in my grade twelve year of school, and then I plan to go to university to get a degree in physiology, pharmacology, and eventually go into medicine.
Does anybody have any questions for Janelle? While we're, we'll put her on the hot spot for a moment. What's your favorite classes here?
Biology.
Then you're heading down the right path. Counselor Peterson?
I had the recreation advisory meeting last week. We discussed the changes that were made to the, the.
Joint.
Joint use agreement with the schools, and so that will be coming to our meeting next week to be reviewed. Looks like it addressed a lot of the things that was brought up at the previous advisory meeting, so it's been good to see that. There's some discussion about some of the parking around the BMX track when there's events being held there. I guess a couple of people that are on the committee witness, kids just about getting, getting hit because there's such a hub of activity, and with people parked on both sides, that there's only room for one vehicle at a time to go one way, did not two side by side, they were saying, so. You know, kids running with their bikes back and forth, the vehicles, it led to some, some close calls, and so they were wondering if there's something that can be done to kind of, for those special events to, to deal with some parking, to open up wider traffic and stuff, so. So, that I imagine will be coming next week as well to, to our committee of the whole meeting for discussion. I think that was about it with that, so that's all I've got for today.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schramm?
Yes, well, I realized that the parks and rec material for giving the help with that.
Volunteer?
No, the.
Master plan.
Master plan, I didn't have anything to add to it, so I didn't add anything to it. But I'm glad that we'll get to hear the final results for that. The WSCV Sports Liberty Dinner was, I thought was a good success, and I think it was well-attended. It was a good, good end to a good round of, of being able to raise support for our second rink, and hopefully, one day, we'll be able to see the full fulfillment of seeing that built. Also, I was able to get to the community registration event at the Legends on Wednesday, and with our city clerk, and we, I thought that it was quite well-received by those groups that were there. I think they were pleasantly surprised that we as, as council members would be interested in visiting with them and giving our thanks for what they do for our city, and also to give thanks and to show their support of what they do, and also to help stir up volunteer appreciation in their groups, as well as to see, they're looking forward to having us come and visit. I think some of them have already contacted our city clerk, and so you'll all be getting some things to do, to go visit, and hopefully, we can use this to our advantage to really show support for our volunteers.
Do you want to maybe give them a little insight, I know you and I know about it, but just for the other two?
Okay, what we want is, as the volunteer appreciation banquet is, it really was, it really felt like we want to personally, personally go to each one of the different groups, their executive meetings, and to personally thank them for what they bring to the table in our city. And to also help them come forward with their own initiate, or invitation to bring about, say, a sponsor to appreciate their volunteers, and also to raise the level of their support of their different groups. So, the idea was that each of us as, as counselors would go to the different groups. We'd be, as city clerk plans out our invitations, that we would go, each of us would have a certain group to visit, we would give our thanks, and also to promote the new volunteer appreciation banquet that would be happening in April second. And so, in the new year, there'll be a call for nominations. And so, our going to the different groups is to, again, bring that forward, that nomination slate, to remind them to bring nominations, it's personal, face-to-face meetings rather than just emails. And I think that most of them really felt that was a good idea, and they appreciated the effort, and they look forward to helping us, and I think we'll have a good rest slate of volunteers coming forward for nomination. If you have any questions?
Yeah, just, yeah, I just, because I, I think it's, it sounds like an awesome idea. I think that's a great way to personalize and get out and see the volunteer groups. So, where did it come from, and where did that idea come from to do that, and whose date, you're saying there?
Well, as, as right now, it is myself, the mayor, Cheryl Spence, our deputy mayor, and our city clerk. We are sitting down as a mini kind of planning committee for the volunteer appreciation banquet. And we spun off ideas of how to generate more nominations. And so, the idea was, it can't be just done by an email or a text. We really need to personally welcome people and be thankful for what they do bring to our, our city, because a lot of different events take place, especially the Cheer Classic, you know, what they do for our, in the Legends Center, and the exposure that they bring, and to be able to go to those that show leadership to that event and to say thank you, and to allow them to bring forth nominations, I think is win-win for everybody. And it, and we do want to be able to bring the appreciation banquet to, to another level, to where it has entertainment, it is a nice venue, it's a good dinner, and it just brings a solidifying effect to what we're saying, and rubber meets the road, honoring those that volunteer their time. And maybe our city clerk wants to add to that, she's very capable. I've, I've learned, as we've gone from table to table, and I think that most of them are very appreciative, if not all.
They're very, very appreciative to have a council member there and thanking them. So, our spiel to them when we were walking around is we wanted to take five minutes.
So, so where was this?
This is at their registration night, last Tuesday. So, there was, I think we had seen fifteen tables were set up in there, from different groups throughout the community, and we basically went up and personally thanked them for the volunteer work that they were doing at this time, and that we would really like to have one of our counselors come and talk to their executive, because we realized all these boards and these executive committees are all volunteers. And we just want to take the time as council to say thank you, and to give them a five-minute little spiel on the thank you and on the volunteer appreciation awards. We asked them to kind of start thinking about it right now, who they see in the club, who's working really hard in the backgrounds, you know, there's a lot of people that we don't get to see and being not involved in every single club, so we're asking them to bring nominations forward. We thought this personal interaction over the months of October and November would kind of get the ball rolling a bit, and then we'll start going with emails and chatting back and forth with them to get nominations in January for the awards.
The idea was not to put down what has been done, but to just raise the level to another aspect of, you know, saying thank you and honoring those that volunteer their time, because that often gets, gets left or. And I, I appreciate what's been done, we thanked Coralie for what she has done so far, and we just look forward to what's going to happen in the future.
It should be fun, we'll let you guys know when we have a schedule of who's available. Like, like I said, it's only five minutes, we don't want you to sit there through the entire meeting, so like the first five minutes of the meeting would just be a quick, hey, thank you guys so much for what you bring to the community, thank you for the time you're putting in, and then just a little pamphlet on the volunteer night.
Anything else great work?
Yeah, the last thing was just, I was at the announcement. I, I just want to say publicly that I've, in being on council for as many years as I have, almost twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, I can't count now, but I, I am so grateful that we have been able to secure this investment for our lagoon, and it has been a long time coming. We have not seen money like this come from the two portions of government federally or provincially for, since I've been on council, and that's, and to have this come, it is very welcomed and very appreciated, and yeah, looking forward to the, to seeing this, this investment take place and to be done, and to see our wastewater lagoon come to the, to handle what we needed to handle, and so it's an exciting time for sure.
Thank you. A couple that I have too, and some of them have the same, I think Counselor Schramm and I hang out together with some of these. First of all, Bittersweet with the Last Sports Supper, Warman Sport and Cultural Village Supper, and this is a project that I've sort of volunteered since day one, seeing right from the first meeting and seeing it come all the way through to where we built, got the building built, and then all the way through to now trying to get the second arena there, so it's exciting. I'm sure there'll be some type of sports supper, some type of supper, it just won't be that group doing it, and that was what it was sort of left to, is if somebody else wants to be new eyes on it, and new sort of energy and new sponsors, this is maybe the opportunity, because it's been thirteen years with a lot of the same energy and same people going through it, so right. energy and same people going through it, so right. So that was part of the reasoning for it is that you're almost giving people an option, knowing they've been there since the beginning. I, I also had down, thanked the city clerk for taking the lead with the volunteer appreciation event. Uh, and that we'll have information shared about that coming up. Uh, also with the infrastructure announcement, just I wanted to mention that, you know, I had a chance to meet with Minister Keating. Uh, he, he's out of his role now and he's now with seniors and uh, seniors and rural health, which probably I need both, so it's uh, it's, it's, it's not a bad thing to still be in contact with them. Uh, he's a bit of a, a, a friend too, so. I, I, I think it was, I, I want to thank Counsel Jones where he, he talked about the advocacy, what we can do, and I know from that came some phone calls and we reached out, but, and, and I don't uh, want to really thank publicly, you know, manager Smith here too that what, what we needed to do was reach out to people and, and what I've learned over the years here is that sometimes it's, you, you reach out and, and you get to know the different people in these roles, and by knowing these people, you talk to them and, and they at least move, it's like, I, I use the example of resumes. It's instead of a hundred resumes, at least yours is fully reviewed and they make sure they go through it. Doesn't mean you'll get it all the time with our grants, but it does mean that we are going to be fully looked at, cause I think they're, from the bureaucrat role and from the political role, we had, we had a chance for ours to be reviewed, so it was, it was good to see. And so that is very good news and it really helps with some other, some of the other projects too, that uh, that we have. Wanted, also just mentioning that we have six hundred and ninety, I have ninety-three here, but it's actually ninety-eight now. Uh, students at Warman High School, nine to twelve, and a new principal there, Mer- Andrew Meriwether, and I just wanted to mention that too. If you want to stop by and meet him anytime, come by the school. And just a busy week coming up with the reconciliation meeting and RCMP advisory meeting on Wednesday, which I'm looking forward to. And covering uh, Mayor Spence at a rec P four G meeting uh, on tomorrow, yeah. I guess we'll be there that day. So that's it. Okay, we'll move down to correspondence, which I don't think we all yesterday. Okay. Okay, the RCMP media release, anything from that? Okay, the letter from Dave Dole, and what I've asked, uh, since we only have this information at this point, what I've asked administration to do is put together a report that uh, we have something at the next committee of the whole, but if there's any other questions or anything else you want in that report, now would probably be the time to ask. Cause I think we, we need to address it, but we really, all we have is a request from, from uh, Dave Dole at this point about wanting to park his RV. And I, I, I think the basic things of what are the regulations, what do we currently have in place, exactly what is he asking compared? And then what are, what are some options we can give him, or what are some options, what have we done? Yeah, so we can look at that committee of the whole. Anything else with that one? Okay, and it's just a photo of the motorhome park there right now. Okay. Uh, motion to file correspondence? Motion? Counsel Schramm?
Do accept, I moved do accept and file correspondence from, of letters from Dave Dole and the RCMP media release as read for September ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Secondary? Counsel Jones, any questions? All those in favor? Okay, and we have the other reports, stupidity report, and looking for a motion? Yes, Counsel Jones?
Motion approved the August tw- two thousand and nineteen to a better report as written.
Okay, secondary, Counsel Peterson, any questions? All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we'll call for communications.
Hi.
Hello there.
So I have some updates for you tonight. Um, we had a few business visits since our last meeting. Subway, Warman Nutrition Health Food Store, Ideal to You Thrift Store, and Upstage Dance Company. And it was a busy morning, but it was, went over pretty good. We have more scheduled for next week. We're seeing Pet Value, they have a new manager there. And Tammy's Training. And hopefully Woody's Furniture, but I haven't confirmed that one yet, so looking forward to that. Um, I have a reminder on here for Orange Shirt Day. Since I wrote this, I've sent you, I think, three more event invitations. There's the Business Breakfast next Tuesday. Um, firefighters dine and dance and Day of Service. So if you could please take a look at your calendars and respond to those invites, so I know if you can come. And I'm not going to try and pronounce that first word. Sorry, how did you say?
No, I'm, I'm not sure, Wichita when?
Yeah, I think that's it, Wichita.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have an invitation open to someone from council to take Mayor Spence's spot. Um, Counsel Philip Chuck is going, but unfortunately Mayor Spence had another event come up. So if you could please let me know, so I can talk to the registration people about switching the names. Um, it's a two-day commitment too, by the way. Um, and I gave you the usual social media update. I'm not sure if anyone had any comments about that.
I could go to the Richard Tounen, this indigenous engagement conference.
I can put your name down?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and uh, just a little bit about Orange Shirt Day. I was there last year and I'll, I'll just sort of mention that uh, we had Lyndon Linkletter that did some talking at the beginning, right at the beginning of noon hour, so at twelve ten, he, he gave a bit of a talk and then at, at twelve thirty was the roundup. So, I mean, you're invited to all of that. That's with Great Plains College, the city of Warman and Warman High School, sort of all together uh, doing a celebration on that day. So everyone's welcome to that and right from twelve ten on. And as we get more information, I know uh, Great Plains took the lead on it, but we have a facility where it's at and Lyndon is sort of their uh, on campus person that works with them for most of these events. So that's on September thirtieth. I think we even have shirts for people that don't have them, may have.
I ordered actually pins.
Okay, pins, perfect, okay? Okay, any question about any of that? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion for accounts? Oh, accept and file, sorry.
I'd move to accept and file a communication liaison report for September ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Secondary, Counsel Peterson, any questions? All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, looking for a motion, counts? Yes, Counsel Jones?
Move, the council approved the city council as presented by checks numbered two zero seven two eight dot two, two zero seven five five for the total amount of five hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the payroll voucher is numbered nine four three zero two nine five nine two in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-three cents for September ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
And secondary? Counsel Schramm? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Carrie. And motion to adjourn, Counsel Jones?
Take the motion to adjourn the September ninth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting of council.
Secondary? Counsel Peterson? All those in favor?